Welcome to another meeting of the Lorraine County Commissioners broadcast exclusively on your Lorraine County Community College Education Station. The Lorraine County Commissioners cordially invite you to see the meetings live and in person every Thursday morning. The meetings are located in the Lorraine County Administration Building located at 226 Middle Avenue in downtown Aluria. The meetings start at 9:30 a.m. on most weeks. Now, enjoy the meeting.
Apologies to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a little saying today to segue into our meeting from Albert Einstein, "The three rules of work: out of clutter find simplicity; from discord find harmony; and in the middle of difficulty lies opportunity."
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Well, before we go on, I just want to say what that statement says, that between two roses, there is a thorn today. So, there you go. Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you. I wanted to do this. This is such, from Chuck Blair.
Oh, you found that?
Yeah, but see, yours has an elephant on it.
I was looking to get you guys an elephant.
Mary Jo. No elephant for you.
Thank you guys, so.
Thank you very much.
Okay, there. Now, that's it for the harmony. I think it's meeting time. Thank you. Roxanne?
Okay, under resolutions, I had a motion to approve the job and family bills repayment.
Some move.
Second. Discussion? Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Investments?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Appropriations?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Transfers?
Some moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
There are no advances today? Requisitions?
Before we move or make a motion, I think it would be appropriate to have a discussion. That's fine with the board?
Fine with me.
I got the requisitions today, and our county administrator didn't sign any of these things before it came on my desk, which I have issues with. Is there a reason why it came to us without your review? Or, well, I don't think that's appropriate for us to look at this if the county administrator hasn't reviewed the requisitions.
Normally, I always get a draft copy late Friday afternoon or Monday morning. I did review the draft and made some changes to it and sent it back down for final publication. I never saw it after that draft copy.
So, you're telling me you didn't see the additions that were made afterwards, then I take it?
No, sir.
I don't think so.
If I may finish, then we have to make the final copy. You're supposed to bring them up and give them to me, and I sign them, and then I put them out on the table for the board to take a look at. I don't know why that procedure wasn't followed this time. I'll have to check into it.
Okay, well, I'd like to talk, if that's, I'd like to discuss the solid waste advertising expenditures. Dan, if you don't mind taking a podium, I appreciate it. It's something we held off from last week's meeting for those of you that didn't catch it last week.
I also had some questions and possible exceptions.
There's a lot in here, so before we make the motions that I want to go through, we'll go, I would like to discuss the ads, because I said I wanted to put it on hold and review it. First of all, I'd like to apologize to some people for last year's my voting on these budgets. What I see is a Lorraine County solid waste advertising budget for 2001, it isn't an equitable distribution between this community for the advertising dollars. We seem to be missing the African-American and Hispanic communities. There happens to be two other radio stations, and they're not on here at all. So, I think would be appropriate is for you to come back to this board next week with an itemized list of the projections of where you're going to spend solid waste money. Instead of piecemeal on this, you know, 11 grand, 8 grand, and whatever it is, it usually comes out throughout the whole year, we have no idea if this is an equitable expenditure for the community. I mean, we're missing two communities. It looks like last year, I don't know what was going on before, but it looks like I voted on this all last year, and we're missing some key markets here for solid waste. So, I think what would be appropriate is to you to work with the county administrator and put together pretty much what you did, what you gave me, which is a list of what we spent last year. And some of these things are events. According to my notes here at the bottom, you're saying 2002 will be similar to 2001, which means we can take these events that you're going to do, you already know you're going to do them, right? Instead of signing one or two contracts for maybe just to do, I'm not going to single anybody out, but let's say one radio station, you're going to do the weather and everything else. Well, I would think that if they know we're going to do eight events with them this year, and we're going to do the weather, and we're going to do all these other events, we should be able to get a better term contract with that one radio station. Because it looks like to me the contract's only going to be for certain advertising. So, what I'd like to see is a more equitable distribution between maybe some minority radio stations that are out there that aren't being used. I believe the WDLW was never used last year, or WJBT. I'm just looking at 2001 with what you gave me. So, what I think would be more appropriate for the solid waste department is to say, here's what we're going to spend on billboards, and here's where it's going to be, here's what we're going to spend on, because you have it in here, but it's kind of all over the page. Here's what we're spending in the journal, you got in here the Chronicle, you have also in here the Wellington Enterprise, the press. But there's more local newspapers out there that some people just read the local newspapers. There's also other radio stations. So, I think what I would like to see, because last year we spent, according to this, is $150,000, and I don't think it was equitably distributed between the communities. I mean, if anyone wants to jump in after that statement, I mean, do you think that's a fair statement, or do you think?
No, I agree with you on everything you're saying there, but, you know, where I disagree in the advertisement is that, like you said, $150,000, I think that could be put to better use. It's been 10 years that we've been pounding in people's head that they have to recycle to reduce and save the life of the landfill in Lorraine County. And I think all the advertisement in the world isn't going to help people or increase the recycling that we're now doing in the county. As a matter of fact, I think our quota is very low in regards to a report that I read. We haven't met our quota according to the plan that we have. But I think, you know, this money could be put to better use by maybe employing people in the county to maybe monitor and to assist businesses. We're low in business recycling, we're low in apartment recycling. So, in my opinion, I would like to see the ads all reduced, period.
Well, the way that I was in the solid waste committee yesterday, and they had, what, $332,000 to be geared for advertising and marketing, which could be, I don't want to use the word trash and trinkets, but it's the stuff that we pass out to promote solid waste, you know, is that part of that, you know?
Yes, it is. Generally, it runs about averages probably 20,000.
Okay, then, because according to the committee, we had 332,000 earmarked for the budget for advertising.
Right, that's a total of ODNR money and our money from the solid waste district.
And do we control how to spend the ODNR money, Jim?
We discuss it with ODNR representative, the district rep, and then he approves or disapproves of our expenditures.
Okay, so that I think it'd be-
And nine times out of 10, he's got some-
No, it'd be appropriate to include that in the overall scheme so we can make sure there's some equity sharing going on here.
It is there, okay.
Well, if we're talking about 300 and some thousand dollars just in advertisement and haven't seen an increase in recycling in the county, I think that that money should be put to use in a better way, and probably employing people to do more in the recycling area would be beneficial. You can put a lot of people to work for that kind of-
No, I agree, but I think the key here is we don't have a plan. I'd like to see your projections for advertising for the next 12 months, and we, you know, and say, this is where ODNR, this is where we're going, this is where the money's going to these groups of advertisers here, if 20 grand's going for the, you know, to promote it, then I'd like to see that as up for the whole year instead of having to come by this way. I mean, it's my fault. I looked at what we spent last year, and it wasn't, we were approving the stuff as we went on.
Commissioner, most of the ODNR money, the funding was in the mass structure that you approved earlier on.
Yeah, no, that's not what I asked you, though.
Well, I was trying to explain that within just the ODNR structure, that everything's explained within the grant of where the money is going to go.
Okay, and so can you put-
And you're telling me that you want to bring it all together in one line item as to what?
No, not one line item. I'd like to see, I tell you what, I'm not acceptable to spending any money at all on advertising today, because I don't feel like it's being shared equitably. I think we're missing some minority markets. I don't know if we're using, I mean, we got, right now, we got a couple of cable, some radio, and-
Mr. Chairman, I have a question on the sheet where you put the ads for Aluria and Lorraine, which is part of the Ohio Department of Natural Resources grant. But I want to know if we have discretion in that matter, the Board of Commissioners has discretion, or is that a pass-through?
The funding that you're talking about, the $56,600?
Well, I'm talking about what you have submitted under requisitions today, 366, 67, and 68, and I think those three anyway, are specifically delegated to the cities of Aluria and Lorraine, ODNR, and it said so on the requisition sheet. My question is, are those items that this Board of Commissioners has discretion over? I mean, can we decide to do that or not do that?
Yes, yes. In other words, what has transpired in that is, we actually have, we do the, all the paperwork for the two communities. Go ahead, Jim.
Do you know what we want, Jim?
I know what you want, Commissioner Moore, and we can do that, and we can bring that back to you. And you've asked for that before, and we need to do that. The second issue is on the ODNR grants, we're the fiscal agent for the ODNR grants. It's a pass-through with us as the fiscal agent, so we have very little control over the spending of the dollars as long as they're appropriately spent within the guidelines of the grant that we're the fiscal authority for. Would you echo that, Mr. Billman?
Yes, that's very true.
Thank you.
So, who makes the determination about how the money is to be spent?
The final determination is made by the receiving entity, which would be the cities.
Okay, so, in other words, it is a pass-through?
Correct.
Okay, so, these three requisitions that we talked about are not subject to be included?
Which three?
366, 67, and 68 are not subject to being included in the overall program that you're talking about?
We act as the fiscal agent to make sure the money was spent in accordance with the guidelines of the grant, not necessarily where they're spent, as long as it's an appropriate expenditure.
Yeah, but who decides where it's spent? The cities?
The recipients of the grants.
Okay, so, the 332,000 in the plan that we looked at, is a lot of that ODNR and pass-through money, too, included in there?
A portion of it is, but we can also make the board's desires known. They do have to work with us to get us, to get those grants through the solid waste department. We can make your desires known and ask for cooperation. I'm sure they'll be more than reasonable in cooperating with us.
Yeah, and I would have to answer that, Jim, that we do have good cooperation from the city of Lorraine and Aluria on this.
Absolutely.
And we recommend a lot of the things that we discuss, certain issues as far as what they're going to use the money for, and it's been a good project for us.
So, what's 372, 373, and 374 that was added after the fact, after the county administrator reviewed it for $12,000? It's two radio stations in the office on aging for a total of 12, 12, 12, 6. Is that something that's a pass-through, or is that something that you were just running through, or what?
No, that's our advertising program for the year.
Those are actual advertising dollars.
That was put on hold last week.
Okay, so, what about this list you gave me for 2001? Are the pass-throughs on this list, too?
I believe so.
I'm not, some of them may be pass-throughs, but I think, I'm not, I don't think the bulk of them are. Plus, we have ODNR dollars that we direct, ours.
Right.
And a great portion of those dollars that Commissioner Moore's looking at are under our direct control, even though they're all given.
I just want to make sure we're being fair with the money, that's all. And if I, I don't, I don't like seeing these come up every three months, oh, here's a thousand here, here's a thousand there. I like to make sure, I'd like to review the whole plan for the year, and just vote on it, and then we're done. When you come back up and say, oh, this requisition's for this, we discussed it in February.
I completely understand your position.
And that shouldn't take long to do, because with what I got here, it took a week to get.
Mr. Billman and I will meet, and we will bring a plan back to the Board of Commissioners, and we can have more dialogue at that time.
Could you bring it to us maybe next, like, next Monday or Tuesday? It shouldn't take long, so we can review.
Monday's a holiday.
Is it really?
So, they come in on weekends, right? I'm just kidding.
I, some of us do.
Yeah, some of us do.
What I'd like to suggest is that we probably need two weeks. If we're going to explore different markets, we're going to have to get cost data from them, and that's going to take a little bit of time to develop. So, you have something to look at.
Is that okay with the board?
I agree.
Then we can discuss what, because then you have issues on how much, and-
Right.
I just don't want to promise you something that we may not be able to bring back. Getting cost data, we have to tell them what type of ads we want, they have to figure out how long they're going to run, how much it's going to cost them, and it may take them a little time to get that data back to us, so you have something to judge.
But I also want to make sure that you're negotiating and say, hey, this is an ongoing project that you can count on for the next three to four years. That might help us in pricing.
We will.
At least for three years of the plan, I'm saying. If there's three years in the plan, or you don't like that, do you, Dan?
Well, things change so much-
Well, no, I'm just saying.
-in the industry that you should leave yourself some discretion on what we do from year to year.
Okay, well, just-
Sure, we can make a-
You've been doing it for 10 years, correct?
Well, Dan has, and there's been other people involved.
Commissioner, recognizing that, we will maximize what we pay for with the minimum amount of resources.
Okay, so, would it be appropriate for us to at least vote on 366, 367, 368, then?
Yes, sir.
What about?
Those are ODNR.
Those are, those are the ones that are pass-throughs that we, but then I have a problem with 372, 373, and 374 then, because that one is going to be part of the discussion in two weeks, correct?
Right.
May I back up on that? So, you're saying that the three that deal with ads for the city of Aluria and Lorraine, we're not going to consider them when we talk about this?
When I spoke to Mr. Billman, I'll reaffirm this right now, my understanding was that we were the fiscal agent and a pass-through on those grants. Did you place the ads or cost those ads on behalf of the city?
That's correct.
That wasn't my question. It was a yes or no question.
Yes.
Did you place the ads for the city of Lorraine or Aluria, or were you merely giving them the dollars, and they gave you the plan?
No, they tell us what they're going to do, and ODNR approves it, and we act as fiscal agent, we expend the monies for the programs they want.
But I think I heard you say that solid waste recommends.
We actually have a give and take between the cities and ourselves at sitting at a table, and we look at different mediums of advertising, what works, what worked last year, and they have the final decision, but we do recommend some items to them for discussion purposes, and they make the decision.
All right, thank you. Then the final decision is theirs. Mr. Chairman, I would entertain a motion that we approve the requisitions as presented except for page five. I'll tell you the ones that I'm in favor of including. I'm in favor of including 366, 367, and 36H, which are those that we just talked about now. 369, which is the allocation to the Lorraine City Health Department. 371, which is for the Veterans Services, totally unrelated to this discussion. The rest of them, I'm not in favor of at this time.
Okay.
You're in favor of 366, 367, 368, correct?
369 and 371, correct?
Yes.
On page five, we said it on other pages, but-
Well, I included all the rest of the pages.
Oh, you did?
No, that's what was my attention. I wanted to approve all the requisitions that were presented this morning, and on page five, those items I mentioned.
And the only one you're not in favor of is, which ones are you not in favor of?
I'm not in favor of the purchase of the Crown Vic, and I'm not in favor of 372, 73, and 74 at this time.
Seven, 37?
Three, excuse me, 370, yes, which is the car, and 372, 73, and 74.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Any more discussion?
Yes.
I would prefer to table all the advertisement issues until we get further information.
Is that the same thing what we just did?
No.
Oh, okay.
Ready to move to approve them?
No, 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 no.
I move to approve the advertising for the Aluria and Lorraine, which is part of the ODNR grant, which after discussion here, I believe that I understand that while the solid waste department made recommendations, the final decision was made by the cities of Aluria and Lorraine, and that was part of the grant that they have received from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. Is that my understanding is correct?
In other words, you sent the information in to the Ohio Department of, OD, I mean, who is it now?
It's Ohio Department of Natural Resources.
Natural Resources. Okay, ODNR. All right, you sent that in, you sent the application into them stating that these would be funded through their grant.
Right, we have a quarterly meeting with the district rep from ODNR, and that's when we discuss these issues.
You discuss them, or was the grant approved on this condition that this money be spent in this way?
That's correct.
So, more or less, it has to be spent in this way?
Basically, yes. On the ODNR grant, that's pretty much already set and done.
And for these amounts, Dan, for these amounts? Did you give them the figures? That can't, cannot be changed?
Well, I, let me back up. We can change, and we have the opportunity to change in one time.
Well, that's not what you said.
When?
After, after we get into the grant, if we see some, something that we need to be changed, it can be changed, one time.
What are you talking about? What are you talking about?
Yeah, ODNR money.
You're talking about the plan, or you're talking about this advertising?
No, we're talking about the ODNR grant.
Okay, just, okay, you're talking about the grant.
Okay.
And that's for the advertisement?
It generally isn't done, because generally, the, what we, what we have before ODNR is acceptable to them at that point in time, and things do change within ODNR also.
If we find a better way to spend this money, we have a chance that they might approve our changes.
That is correct, but we're operating with timelines with them right now, and so I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, we're talking about $32,000, $33,000 roughly right here. I, I mean, if that's, I don't want to make that the issue or hold up the marketing, but we still talk probably another $120,000 that we have to deal with. I think the fact that we're not wasting a lot of time discussing this, because maybe there wasn't a plan, I think Mr. Cordez has said he'll take and work with you. I think he has a feel of what this board's looking for, and then we'll have another discussion. I think that's what would be more appropriate.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Two weeks.
You also had a question in regards to how this money is being spent, in what areas?
Correct, but what-
We could change that. There could be changes made there. This could be spent in other areas of media.
Oh, Dan's starting to take the fifth over there, I think. He's watching too much of Ben R.
I'll tell you what, when you get in and working with ODNR, it gets to be a problem once we finally get everything done.
But what I'm saying-
I'll do whatever you want to do, but, you know.
Dan, what I'm saying is this money could be divided up into other radio stations, too. It doesn't have to specifically go to these stations and the media you have here.
You're going to make it simple. Can we change this and go with a couple more stations? Yes or no? Can I add two more stations?
I would suggest that we don't do it in that manner. If you want to do it in that manner, we can use our advertising budget, solid waste budget that doesn't have any effect on ODNR, so we can get through with the ODNR grant.
Okay, so, you want to add this to the total package, so we'll make it equitable, right?
We can, we can do that out of our funds, yes.
Okay, so, basically, it's a take, it's be up to the commissioners to make sure it's equitable, not the cities, correct? That's what you just said, right?
I-
That's what I got out of it, right? You're saying, don't, just say yes, Dan.
Say yes.
Thank you.
I mean, I, you know, and there's, I have to tell you, there's, when we look at this advertising dollars, I mean, there's many, many ways this can be used, and we have used the best medium that we think is there.
No, I agree. You know what, that's another discussion. If you can just show me what you're going to spend the money on for the next 12 months, and the three of us will take a look at it, and we feel it's not equitable, I think we're probably going to vote to change it a little bit. If you're telling us we can't change this right now, that's fine, we'll make it more equitable on our end. The county commissioners will do it, okay? That's where, that's where it sounds like it's at to me, but it looks like you guys are going to come back in two weeks with that, right? Okay, are we done with that?
Okay, where are we at with 72 and 73? Are we still-
That's off the table. What I made a second to Commissioner Blair was 366, 367, 368, 369, and 371. That was on page five, and I second that. Now, we're in discussion, though, because I think you had some exceptions, too, Commissioner Vancy.
Yes, but it wasn't in regards to solid waste, no, or other issues. Now, the other exceptions that I had were 328, 29, 30, and 31, and those were computer-related issues. I'll start out with 328. That's instructional class for county internet project. I've always been of the understanding that when we hire a person, we hire them in the category, in the area where they'll be working, and that they know what they're going to be doing, and that we wouldn't have to train them, and so therefore, I have to oppose this one, but I have another concern. I believe that this training is already in process, and we're being pulled after the fact.
I can check on that, but I certainly hope that that is not the case.
I think it is the case. I think you're going to find out that the person's being trained right now, and we're being asked to pay for after.
Who is being trained?
I think Karen Cleveland's being trained in computer networking on the web.
Well, this was for, I understood this training to be internet website design training that was recommended by her director to enable her to continue her work with our website.
You're aware of it?
Yes, I'm aware of it. It was $750 for 10 hours of onsite hands-on training. I did speak with Mr. Smith on that. I'm not aware that anything's going on. Obviously, I don't, it needs to come to the board for approval first, so I would have to, I would have to verify that. I have no knowledge of that issue. But I think the training is necessary. Karen wasn't hired as a website design person. She works on a lot of technical issues. This is an aside for her, that she's able to provide us with this additional benefit, and we should give her a little bit of training.
I believe that she knew, she knows about internet and the website, and I personally would question whether or not she needs the classes.
Then I-
No, I don't believe in training people on the job when you hire them for that position, that they should know and be trained before they even come in here.
I'm fine with pulling that request.
I'm not. You know, I think that the internet and these things are ongoing, that we need updating on. And I don't like to use NOAC as an example all the time, but they have a wonderful website, and they have educated one of their employees to be classified or certified as a webmaster. She has gone to school to do this, and the benefits to the agency are significant. And if this department head is recommending this, and it's necessary, I think that's what we have department heads for.
Well, I think she's doing a terrific job, and just the one with the dog pound alone, she'd tell us what a great job she's doing, and then she's worked on so many other ones, that I just doubt if she needs the training.
Nobody's seen my picture on the web, though. I don't have any teeth on the web. Oh, you fixed that? Okay. That's why I missed one. I bought no teeth, so I felt maybe it's more training.
Are we blanking on that? Yeah, but who put it on there?
I don't know. No one's messing up to it.
All right.
I think it was a Democrat. I was just thinking that. Okay. So this is a continuing thing here, and then what about on, you had 29 and 30 and 31?
Yeah, 29. I would like to know specifically what miscellaneous software, hardware, and network supplies are needed.
Yeah, this is a, we're looking at-
They're blanket purchase orders, 329 and 330. Our blanket purchase orders, one was CW, CDW Government, Inc., and MicroAdvantage, Inc.
We've been opening these POs for years. You run into a problem where you need an $8 cable, and you can't fix something because you have to wait a week or two to be able to buy the cable. We've always done our business this way. It wouldn't be, I don't know-
Excuse me, Jim, we're not talking $8 here. We're talking about $5,000.
Well, we have-
For three months.
Well, we have open POs like that with our maintenance department, our telecommunications department, so that they can purchase equipment.
Or computers?
No, we can't purchase computers without going through the data board or to this board.
Well, the data board approves. I mean, you just bring something in the file, and they're going to approve it. But the thing is, you're talking about $5,000 here. You could be purchasing two computers that we don't know anything about, and that's only for three months.
I don't think they're allowed to, are they?
Well-
They could with this, with-
I can't disagree with Commissioner Vassay. They could if they wanted to, you know, go to that perilous cost, I'm sure they could.
I'm saying, let's reduce that cost. If you want to give them a blanket PO, then let's reduce $5,000.
How about 2,500? What difference?
That's fine with me.
For three months?
Well, just for the year.
No, it is not.
It's for three months.
Blanket purchase, January through March.
Oh, there it is.
I would say $1,500.
Well, the only thing is-
They can always come back.
Well, yes, but there is time and effort involved with paperwork, and that's spending of money, too, so I-
And it only takes a week, Betty, to get a requisition through?
No, no, my point was, there's time and effort involved on the part of the employee to prepare these documents, to send them up here. And I think it's redundant to have to come back for $1,500 when, in fact, the law allows you to have a blanket purchase order up to a specific amount.
My concern is, we're two weeks away from March, and we're talking about something here.
Yeah.
I mean, what, are we talking about the end of March, and they'll come back? Or are we talking the first of March?
The end of March should be more than a month.
Okay, so we're looking, I mean, is there enough, my 25, I'm fine with 2,500 for now, and we can talk about it again in April.
Absolutely.
Let's talk about before April, because we're talking about something that's already two months, or six weeks old.
Good point.
So can you get?
Right. Recognizing the departments put these in when they feel they need them. We don't actually need them in the beginning of the quarter.
Well, let's put them in, so we don't have to have these separate discussions.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
How about the CDW? Did you have a concern with that, Commissioner Vassay?
Yeah, what additional equipment has to be covered in the maintenance agreement? This is for maintenance agreement.
She's talking about 331.
Oh, you're down?
Yeah, I went down.
Oh, sorry.
I think it's anything that comes up that's unexpected is not with any specificity.
I just need to know what equipment. Is it the Cisco equipment?
Well, MicroAdvantage is covering all our PCs, printers, associated peripherals that go with the computers. You know, as you and I discussed earlier this week, we ran into a major problem at WDA. We got about 60 or 70 computers out there for the people in those programs to use, and at last count, I think Karen said 900, but I heard more closer to 200. Viruses have been removed from the main server in the computers out there, and we're still counting. We had to call in the troops, we had to call in, in fact, you'll be getting the bill for that, for the expense-
The requisition, Jim, is for additional equipment.
Right.
And what pieces of additional equipment are we asking a maintenance on, asking to get this maintenance?
It could be adding an additional piece of equipment to the contract.
Okay, so we're adding which one?
I don't have that information, please.
Is this an issue where we have a whole bunch of computers that aren't licensed? Is that what this is?
No.
No?
This is a maintenance agreement.
We have a whole bunch of computers that aren't on the maintenance list, that we're operating.
How many are those? You don't know how many those are?
I don't know yet, sir.
The note that was attached to the requisition said that the equipment in the data department was under warranty through December 31st, 2001. This equipment, it's dark, I made a copy so I have it. This equipment warranty was expanded and needs to be added to the existing contract. That's for the $18,000.
Once again, additional equipment keeps coming up that's not covered, that we're discovering.
Oh, okay.
And we need to add it to the list. If we don't want to, that's fine. I can't give you any specified list, but if you want it, I'll try to get that. I'm fine with holding it.
Well, what the note said is, the difference was the cost of adding the equipment that just expired under the warranty.
I just don't have listed equipment. I just accepted that that equipment need to be added, and they were taken care of, but I can probably get a list.
Okay. I understand that there is a piece of equipment that has to be added, and I believe it's Cisco equipment, and the requisition is for Smart Solutions, and they're out of Cleveland. Cisco has local certified engineers that will come in within 24 hours. So why aren't we going with Cisco? Why aren't we getting quotes at least?
Why don't we put a hold on this, and I'll get those concerns acted.
All right, would you please?
We already have a contract with Smart Solutions. That contract was approved in August of last year, and quotes were taken, and we received quote from Smart Solution, Magitec, Xerox, Metro Computer Systems. And at that time, we approved this contract with Smart Solutions for the Cisco Network Maintenance Contract. That's the way the resolution-
And how long is the contract for? One period, ten?
Upon the letter dated July 19th, we hereby approve and enter into a one-year contract with Smart Solutions.
Why don't we hold off 33102 till Jim can, I don't have, we're holding it for a week.
I'll take a look at that.
Okay. If that's okay with the board.
Are you saying 102?
33102, we hold.
331?
33102 is what we were talking about.
I have 3, okay, 331.
That's what I'm looking at.
Yeah.
Roxanne, make sure I get that big word.
And which is the other one?
331-02 is the one I was, only one I was interested in holding.
I believe you suggested reducing 330 to 2,500.
2,500, well, yeah.
You want to do that or not?
I'm fine with it, yeah.
About 2,500? Is that what you want?
I was trying to find the compromise, that's all.
Well, and I just want to make these exceptions as part of my motion.
Correct. 2,500 is 330-02.
Okay.
MicroAdvantage, Inc., with an open PO for 2,500. I'm fine with 329-02. I'm fine with 328-2.
Okay. So then, as a mover of the motion, I will add that we reduce the purchase order 330-02 to MicroAdvantage to $2,500, and that we hold 331-02 for further review.
And I'll second that.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Just in the future, can we make sure that?
Yes, sir.
That don't happen? Okay.
Well, I don't know that we can't make sure it don't happen.
I'm talking about the fact that you haven't signed, you weren't, these were not signed by you before we got them.
Oh, I can take care of that.
I mean, that's all. Thank you.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassay?
Aye.
With the exception of 329.
Now, that didn't include solid waste, right? What did we do with that? Did we vote on that already?
Yeah, that was all included in the motion.
Okay.
Okay. I believe it's time for a public hearing at 10:00 a.m. We have a public hearing on the proposed annexation of approximately 37.39 acres in Illyria Township to the city of Illyria, Ohio. Attorney John L. Keys-Walker, acting as agent for M.L. Properties, Inc., February 14th, 2002, at 10:00 a.m. Should I just continue reading this? Is that how you do that?
I just took the 10:00 a.m. one, but I would really note.
Yeah, because I know what I want to do.
I'm sorry.
I know, I was just, okay. Let's see what we have here. The attorneys representing the petitioners on items wanted to have suggested continuance of their hearings to March 7th, 2002, at 11:00 a.m. and 11:30 a.m., respectively. Is that correct, Jerry?
Yes, I think we should indicate on the record that we received correspondence from Attorney Walker, the agent for the petitioner, requesting that there be a continuance. I would indicate to the board that I talked with Attorney Brizna on behalf of Illyria Township, indicating that he had no objection to the continuance, and therefore, it's being done at the mutual request of both parties.
Okay, do we have to make a motion, too?
Mr. Chairman, I would move, based on what the assistant prosecutor has said, that we continue this annexation hearing to March 7th at 11:00 a.m.
A second.
Would anything else happen? Roxanne, okay.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassay?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Thank you, Roxanne.
Just a reminder to any residents or anyone here that is here for the hearing, there will be no further published notice of this meeting.
Thanks, Jerry.
Okay, we're down to item number seven, travel expenses.
I'll move. A second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassay?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Approving bills for payment?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassay?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Need to authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees within the jurisdiction of the county commissioners.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassay?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Need to approve change order number two to LaGrange Plumbing and Trenching of LaGrange, Ohio, for the Lorraine County Emergency Operations Center addition for the nine-on-one agency and EMA in North Gateway Boulevard of Illyria, Ohio. The change order is in the amount of $4,971.50 for removal of underground building foundations and brick backfill rubble that was found during excavation. We also need to authorize the present to execute on behalf of the board.
So move.
I'll second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassay?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Like to advertise notes for public hearing for fiscal year 2002 for the new Horizons Fair Housing Program. Board of Commissioners intends to apply to the Ohio Department of Development for funding for this federally funded program administered by the state. The county is eligible for $20,000 for fiscal year 2002 if the county meets equitable program requirements. To be eligible, the activity must be designed to, one, primarily benefit low and moderate-income persons and households; two, aid in the prevention and elimination of slum and white conditions; or, three, meet an urgent community need. Like to, the public hearing to be held on Thursday, March 7th, 2002, at 10:30 a.m. Like to publish the notice in the Chronicle-Telegram on February 21st, 2002, and in the Morning Journal on February 28th, 2002.
See what we're doing at 10:30 that day? She's got it all arranged.
Yeah, she's so good.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassay?
Aye.
Need to advertise for bids for the following county engineers' projects. The first will be for limestone aggregate, liquid asphalt emulsion, and asphalt plant mixes for the Lorraine County Engineers Highway Department. Like to publish in the Chronicle-Telegram and Morning Journal on February 26th and March 5th, 2002. Bids will be accepted on Monday, March 12th, 2002, at 2:00 p.m. in the public hearing room. The second one, for resurfacing a section of Columbia West River Road and a section of Rip Road in Lorraine County. Estimate of cost, $134,667. Bids will be accepted on Monday, March 4th, 2002, at 2:00 p.m. Like to publish this notice in the Chronicle-Telegram and Morning Journal on February 18th and 25th, 2002. And this notice will be for the Community Development Department for the Grafton Township Building School Elevator Project in Grafton, Ohio, a CDBG-funded project. Estimate of cost, $115,000. Bids will be accepted until 2:00 p.m. on Tuesday, March 12th, 2002. Need to publish this notice in the Chronicle-Telegram and Morning Journal on February 26th and March 5th, 2002.
So move. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassay?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Like to authorize Ron Nabokowski, clerk of courts, to utilize a Lormet Visa credit card in the amount not to exceed $1,000 for the year 2002 for the purchase of gas, oil, emergency purchases, and maintenance of county-owned or leased vehicles, and expenditures for work-related matters to include food, transportation, conferences, lodging, telephone, and internet service provider expenses in accordance with the Highway Code Section 301.27.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move, and I would like to specify that this card would be issued in the name of Ron Nabokowski, if it's not clear.
A second, but is that what he requested? $1,000 for the entire year?
I'm not completely sure. I'm not completely sure of the dollar figure he requested. I had discussion with Mr. Nabokowski, who had followed. Mrs. Blair, do you remember what was in the letter?
I had spoken to Mr. Nabokowski on the phone. He thought $1,000 would be sufficient for him.
Okay, and what is meant by internet service provider expenses? Is that allowable under the law? Maybe Jerry can answer that better.
There's a specific statute that lists what-
What the, yeah. What the card can be used for, and I'm asking if the internet service provider expenses is included in that.
Yes, that's specifically in the statute, huh?
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassay?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Want to approve and enter in the following contract amendments? Hang on, excuse me. Approve and enter into the following contract amendments between the Board of Commissioners on behalf of the Children and Families Council for the Help Me Grow Initiative, July 1st, 2001, through June 30th, 2002, for TANF and GRF funding, October 1st, 2001, through September 30th, 2002, Part C. First one will be Catholic Charities Services Corporation, Catholic Charities Family Center of Illyria. The amended contract shall not exceed $55,723.76. The funds allocated from the following sources would be TANF dollars, $22,147.76, GRF, $6,000; Part C, $27,576. B, Illyria City Department of Health. The amended contract shall not exceed $315,864.18. Funds allocated from the following sources would be TANF dollars, $233,590.52; GRF funding, $76,845.56; Part C, $5,428.10. C, the Lincoln Counseling Center. Number one, amended contract shall not exceed $32,233. The funds allocated from the following sources would be TANF dollars, $20,497; GRF funding, $6,147; Part C, $5,589. Two, a unit of service is defined as one hour of service. C, excuse me, three, per unit compensation shall be in the amount of $54.58 per unit. D, listening advantage. The amended contract shall not exceed $4,790. Funds allocated from the following sources would be TANF dollars, $3,151.50, GRF, $858; Part C, $780.50. E, Lighthouse Family Services, also known as Family Service Association of Lorraine County Incorporated. Amended contract shall not exceed $62,559.59. Funds allocated from the following sources would be TANF dollars, $40,767.84, GRF funding, $11,928.91; Part C, $9,862.84. F, the Lorraine City Health Department. The amended contract shall not exceed $405,703.17. Funds allocated from the following sources, TANF, $161,987, GRF funding, $99,545.17; Part C, $44,171. G, Neighborhood House Association of Lorraine County. The amended contract shall not exceed $228,765.76. Funds allocated from the following sources would be TANF, $216,352.10, GRF funding, $4,610.66; Part C, $7,803. H, Our Lady of the Wayside. Number one, amended contract shall not exceed $13,680. The funds allocated from the following sources would be TANF, $8,699, GRF funding, $2,609; Part C, $2,372. Number two, a unit is defined as one mile. Number three, per unit compensation is defined as $1.97 per mile. I would be Rehab Services Incorporated. Amended contract shall not exceed $26,433. Funds allocated from the following sources, TANF dollars, $5,337, GRF funding, $10,482.33; Part C, $10,185. We need to authorize payment for these various contracts listed above and authorize the President to execute on behalf of the Board.
I'd like to have Juan. Would you like to go to the podium? Jim, did you want to say anything about why we have so much here?
Yes, before one starts. Thank you, Commissioner Moore, and I would very much like to say so. Over the past few years, we've been returning a lot of dollars to the state because we waited until the end of the contract period, knowing to discover that a lot of the community entities that we were contracting with haven't really spent down there a lot of funds. And it's been very distressing because we need to get those funds out there into the community. Juan and I huddled earlier last year, and we huddled again earlier this year, and rather than being reactive to that and saying, "We're not going to -- this isn't tolerable," we decided to be proactive. These contract amendments aren't caused by any fault or any desire on the vendor's part. We're asking for these contract amendments. We're the ones who want to change these contracts. And more reflect getting the dollars out into the community. And I'll let Juan explain further from there, but this is a proactive move by your administration to do a better job.
Thank you, Juan.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez. I'd like to give you a brief history in terms of the previous three years when we've come to this point in time in terms of the, primarily the TANF dollars that have gone back to the state. In 1999, the council was awarded $877,000. That year, we regrettably returned $850,000. In year 2000, the same amount of the award, we returned $500,000. In '01, last year, same award, $877,000, we returned approximately $380,000. So what I'm trying to reflect here is that every year, we're getting indeed better about utilizing these TANF funds. This year, we expect with these amendments that we'll be able to draw down approximately 80 percent of our total award this year. Our award this year for TANF is $960,000. So we anticipate drawing down approximately $750,000 this year through these types of amendments and possibly coming back before the Board in April or early May, once we do another variance report on our existing vendors and identify which vendors may need to be, whose contracts may need to be amended again so that we can indeed reach our goal. If I could just add one more thing, Mr. Chair. In previous years, we've had three or four vendors. This year, we have 11 vendors. To date, we have approximately 600 children enrolled under the Help Me Grow Initiative. That is, already we're at a higher capacity than we were in years past. And I'd like to congratulate all of the vendors and the direction of Jim and of the Commissioners because we've got a report last year from the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services, and we're measured on our six months' goal. And there's two goals primarily that the council is measured on. The first goal is the number of newborn home visits. And according to the documentation, we've achieved 103 percent of our six months' goal. So we surpassed the expectation of the state. The second goal is child fine, particularly with developmentally delayed children and early start. And in that particular goal, we've achieved 106 percent of the state requirement. So it's just an attest to the hard work that's going on, not just at this level, but also at the community level in terms of the vendors that are doing what they're supposed to be doing. And to irritate, this is not a punitive measure against any one vendor or any vendors at all. This is an attempt to do the max that we could do with these dollars to ensure that the monies don't go back and to ensure that we serve our children.
Fantastic. Good job.
Thank you.
If I could segue on to Juan's, an incredible job out there. He had to go out and work with these vendors who were not as willing as it may appear to change these numbers. And Jerry also worked with Juan on some of the more tougher issues. Commissioners, as we try to reinvent ourselves, I find it totally intolerable that we don't do everything within our power not to return money back to the states and that we get it to our taxpayers and we get it to our constituents out there. And that's what we're going to continue to strive to do.
Juan, why have we had a hard time spending this money?
The TANF dollars, as you know, Commissioner, you've heard me over the past few years complain about the regulations and the stipulations that are signed before we can actually draw down those dollars. Part of that are federal requirements, some of those are state requirements, and then others yet are local restrictions that are put on those dollars. It's a tremendous amount of money that we receive. Unfortunately, the barriers to accessing the dollars are just as tremendous. Eligibility criteria, for example, the amount of paperwork, PRC applications, are all necessary in order to justify and verify these dollars, and they're also based on fee for service. So what happens is that if a vendor cannot provide documentation that a particular individual is indeed eligible under the state and local requirements, and then that vendor will not be reimbursed for that particular unit of service, although the service has already been delivered.
Juan, I know you work with Paul Pacino.
Yes, ma'am.
For the homeless. Can some of this money be used for the homeless centers or increased? Because I know Paul wants to increase those services.
My last conversation with Dr. Pacino, he indicated that in their child fine activities, they are enrolling the moms and the children that are already in his shelter, in the neighborhood houses, homeless shelter, Haven Center, the Haven Center. So through that, through that method, we're providing services to the moms and the children that are in the Haven Center. However, to carve out a particular program from these dollars outside of the realm of child fine, that wouldn't be appropriate under the state regs.
Commissioners, I would also like to add that we've encountered significant problems with our wellness block grant because it's gone over to TANF dollars. And we're not being very successful there. Juan and I are working on it. We have $317,000 on the table that we haven't been able to get out to the community. There was some talk of returning those dollars, and I absolutely put my foot down on returning those dollars right now. We're working real hard to try to get a teen prevention, teen pregnancy prevention program out into the community. But because those dollars have changed from GRF dollars to TANF dollars, and because of the real strict requirements on the utilization of those TANF dollars, our program that we had in place wouldn't have survived. So we do have some serious issues with accessing wellness block grant monies, and Juan and I are trying to put together a general outreach program to use those dollars right now. So we'll be bringing some other stuff back to you, but TANF dollars are real difficult to work with.
No, I'm sure you guys are going to do it. I appreciate you coming up.
Thank you.
It's really surprising that we can't find places with all the needs in this county and all the needy, that we can't find places for this one.
The problem with the wellness and teen, prevention of teen pregnancy with using TANF dollars is you have to have them fill out a PRC application and eligibility. And when you're in the schools and you're working through the schools, you know, how do you have these younger kids fill out PRC applications? And they got to take it home. We don't get the apps back. And then the schools deliver the service and they don't get repaid, and then they're upset. So we're going to continue to try to get those dollars out there. I just wanted to let you know that we're still working on that wellness block.
It's a bookkeeping nightmare, is what you're saying.
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay, so I'll also move.
I'll second.
Excuse me, I have a question. Did you want to make an amendment to one of these?
Thank you. Point of clarification on the amendment. I received a notice late yesterday that Lincoln Counseling Center has chosen not to participate through a contractual arrangement for the rest of the year. So it would be...
So we're going to delete C?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I'll amend my motion to delete C. Chair, are we going to reallocate those funds?
Yes, sir.
Is that going to come at some future date? Wouldn't I just go up and sit there?
We will.
Okay, thank you.
I will agree to the deletion.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Mrs. Blair?
Hi.
Mrs. Vassie?
Hi.
Need to approve the recycling revolving loan fund proposal predicated on the approval of the Solid Waste Management District Plan.
Let's move.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Do we want to hear a little bit about it?
Yep.
Which I think is great.
I think it's a... We got a...
Thank you. Do we have a 10:30, though?
Yes, we do.
Do you want to do that first?
Same as last one. We can do it after.
Okay.
I don't think anybody's here. Is anybody here for the 10:30?
Yes.
Oh, there is? I'll tell you what, I will... Did I second that or did I make that?
You seconded it.
Oh, okay.
Well, you can put it on hold if you want. It may be a lengthy discussion.
Yeah, why don't we put it on hold, and we'll have the hearing. Is that okay with us?
Yes.
Okay. Public hearing on the proposed annexation of approximately 21.32 acres in Alaria Township to the city of Alaria, Ohio. Attorney Kristen McIntosh, agent for the petitioner, Lake Avenue Properties, February 14, 2002, 10:30 a.m. The attorney is representing the petitioners on items one and two have suggested continuance of their hearings to March 7, 2002, 11:00 a.m., 11:30 a.m., respectively. Is that fine?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that the public hearing on the annexation of 21.32 acres in Alaria Township to the city of Alaria, the...
Continue.
Thank you. Continue to 11:30 a.m. on March 7.
Second.
No more discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
I think Jerry...
I would just indicate to council, I think they came in after we had done the 10 o'clock, and we have already moved and continued that.
To 11 a.m. on the same day. Your 11, John, and Kristen's is 11:30. Okay?
Jerry, we may want to mention that there's not going to be any additional publications in newspaper.
Right. Okay, thank you both for coming in.
Thank you.
Right back to the solid waste proposal, revolving loan fund. I'd like to have Dan go to the podium.
Well, Dan and Ron, maybe Ron. Well, whoever wants to lead is fine. I'd also like to hear from both. We have an exciting new economic development incentive that we're getting ready to launch later this year. It's going to be part of the Solid Waste Master Plan. I want to preview it to the Board. I want to get a little bit of your buy-in on how we want to do this now so that if it is approved in the plan, which I'm comfortable it will be, you're not looking at it later and wondering why you didn't see it. So with that, I'm going to let these two gentlemen kick this thing off, but I'm very excited about this. It's going to be a great tool.
Dan Bilman, B-I-L-M-A-N, Solid Waste Director for the county. Thanks, Jim, and good morning, Commissioners. Here on a very positive note here right now, unlike before.
I was positive before.
Was constructive.
It depends on where you're at. This project has been kicked around for the last year or so, and in doing that, we finally got a structure that we thought is a very viable project for us. It's a joint project between Lorraine County Solid Waste Department and the Community Development Department. It's a very exciting program, as Jim has said. It will also be probably one of the first programs of its kind in the state of Ohio, which is very good for us because it puts us out in the forefront. And I'd like to have Lorraine County leading instead of following all the time, so this is one of those programs that we can do that on. I'm going to go through a couple of statements. I'll tell you what the mission statement is for the Revolving Loan Fund. The mission of the countywide recycling revolving loan fund program is to serve as a catalyst for closing the recycling loop. The RRLF, which is Recycling Revolving Loan Fund, will assist the business community in its efforts to reduce the amount of waste materials being placed in the landfill through efforts to facilitate and adopt the reusage of recycled materials as an economic development tool. The objectives to the program is to promote recycling business opportunities, to provide additional markets for recycled materials, to retain and create recycling-related jobs, to increase the manufacturing capacity for recycled materials in the county by working with existing businesses and attracting new industry to the region to utilize recycled materials collected locally. The goals of the program are to provide a market for recycled materials, provide financial assistance to businesses that are currently involved in recycling and activities, recycling activities, or that are desiring to enter the recycling industry. We're going to make existing businesses and individuals more aware of recycling opportunities through effective marketing and advertising. And we're going to encourage job creation through business expansion while at the minimum maintaining current employment levels in the recycling industry. The other goal is to enhance the capacity of existing businesses in the recycling industry through the purchase of recycling materials and products and machinery and equipment. The program is going to be administered by a, through the, will operate in, and will operate similarly to what we already have on board with the county's revolving loan fund. The oversight will be provided by a committee comprised of the county administrator, the county budget director, county solid waste director, county community development director, two individuals from the policy committee, and one individual from the community. This was, this project was put into the plan. We presented it on Tuesday to the policy committee. Policy committee had no objections on this program, so I see no reason for it to go through the process of ratification. It's an excellent program. It's an exciting program. And I think, Ron, you have something to say. I'll give you a little bit more detail. So I thank you for your time, Commissioners.
Thank you, Dan.
Good morning, Commissioners. Happy Valentine's Day.
My name's Ron.
My name is Ron Twining, T-W-I-N-I-N-G. I'm the director for the Community Development Department for Lorraine County. I am very excited to be the sales or the pitch man for this project here today, and I'm happy to share that not only with the Commissioners but the residents of Lorraine County. Typically, as Mr. Cortez said, this is another tool in our economic development toolbox will be this scenario or the storyline that we would use. Perhaps today, we should say it's a rose in the flower vase. I'm here this morning, though, to explain in detail the recycling revolving loan program, and I'm very happy to do that. We did leave PowerPoint presentations in the back of the room so that you have a handout to take home and consider what we are proposing today and give us any additional insight that you may wish to do. It's my desire to briefly explain six entrepreneurial examples, how business and government can come together to close the recycling loop, and I will be succinct. The first step, of course, as Dan alluded to in creating this recycling revolving loan fund, is to include it in the updated solid waste plan, and it appears that that is on its way for that approval. I will add also that this has been reviewed by the Solid Waste Department's legal counsel, John Keresey, and met his acceptance as far as the legalities of this. We still have some other additional administrative and policy guidelines that, once established, will have to be reviewed and approved by council as well. I appreciate the participation by Dan Bilman and his staff over at the Solid Waste, and this truly is, in our opinion, a very worthwhile program to consider here in Lorraine County. We're envisioning two tracks. I will explain, give you some examples of the first tracks, and that would be the loan to businesses that are thinking about making a business expansion. It's our hope that we can convince business owners that are looking to make an expansion to their physical structure to use about 50 percent of their materials in that structure made from recycled materials, be it aluminum wall studs, recycled carpet, sheathing that's made from recycled wood or paper products, anything like that. That would be an eligible activity under the first scenario and the first track for the recycled revolving loan fund. Each loan will be a maximum of $50,000. They could request less. The second scenario or second example that I want to talk under Track One would be a business that's interested in establishing recycling or refurbishment center where we know that structures are currently being torn down, houses primarily, could be industrial structures, that are being torn down, and that material quite often ends up in our landfill, or, as I sometimes refer to, the New Russia Township Underground Storage Facility. And it's a shame. We have beautiful 100-year, 150-year-old floor planking stairwells, crown moldings that could be relatively easily gone in, resalvaged doors, things like that, salvaged and reused and cleaned up and used in other houses. Other places in this country are doing that. We in Ohio are somewhat lagging behind, and we think it's high time for Lorraine County to be a leader on that issue. So any business that's looking to establish this activity, we want to be out front and support. And again, there has been some concern that we need to do job creation, and are most of the jobs going to be located where? According to zoning, urban areas, township areas. And I think this is a situation that this would be well adapted in any community location, and it would be good in all respects. Fireplaces are also quite often lost. As far as commercial and industrial buildings, you know, I-beams and things like that sometimes could be salvaged as well. Third scenario I want to talk briefly about is what the Chicago Park Systems did in 1987. So this is not a new concept, but I think it will be new to parts of Ohio. They had a program called PIPs. Chicago Park System. Hell, I knocked off the sound. Hell, I knocked off the sound. I don't know where we're plugging in here. Is this it?
You're fine.
Now I'm on. I couldn't hear the audience through my ear. Chicago Park System owns Soldier Field, where the Bears play, and they switched over from containers that were made of metal cans for the alcoholic beverages, as well as the soda pops, to plastic containers. They then had large containers that these beverage, plastic beverage containers were put in. They were collected, they were baled, put on a train, shipped to Iowa, and shredded and turned into plastic timbers to go around the playground equipment because of the need for safe landing area for playgrounds, and brought back to Chicago, put and installed in the Chicago play areas at a much reduced rate than what it would have been to have used wooden timbers. And it is a safer item for the children to be around than the hard surface of wood anyway. So they were very successful in closing that loop, taking a commodity that, up until this PIPs program, had been established and disposing of it in a landfill. They took it out of the landfill and found a creative reuse right in their own park system. And we want to be on the forefront to help companies and communities that may be willing to undertake similar situations. It's our feeling that this first track could be completed easily during the calendar year of 2002, and look forward to that. The second track may take a little longer. We would like to think that maybe it could be completed by the end of 2002 or sometime early in 2003. The second track quickly would provide loans to businesses that will manufacture, sell, or utilize products and materials made from post-consumer recycled materials. One example that I have here is a system that's called Insil Block Wall, and they actually use it in new construction or additions to residential and commercial structures, and it has been used successfully throughout this country. The Insil Block system, in a nutshell, is a lightweight product made from styrofoam, concrete, wood, paper fiber that's recycled. They pour it in forms in place with rebar added to it for the structural strength, and when it cures and sets up, the entire system, which can be cut with a chainsaw and is lightweight, can be moved around. The entire system, in the core block, there's regular concrete poured in, but it's an insulated wall system that has no forms to remove or anything else. That is an excellent example of recycling and closing the loop for new construction. The second scenario we have seems somewhat simple, but some ideas that are simple are probably are most ingenious. There are certain types of glass commodities that cannot be recycled that are still going into the landfill. There's a company in Colorado that saw this as an opportunity. They were able to grind the glass, the non-recyclable glass, into very minute sand-sized particles, and they melted down other recycled glass in order to make coasters that we would use in our homes and businesses to put glass containers on. With this, once the regular recycled glass is being melted down and color additives added, they sprinkle in a sand particle of the non-recycled glass that has not been recycled to this point, sprinkle that in, and it gives it a marbled color and sheen to it that has been very successful in selling to the consumer. So they're actually finding alternative uses to the landfill. We think that and other examples should be supported here in Lorraine County. The third scenario is one that, excuse me, one that we have had right here in Oberlin, Ohio, some years ago, where they actually started looking at street constructions and common construction techniques in Oberlin for the granular backfill under the asphalt pavement. They actually, instead of using stone ground-up glass, and use that as granular backfill with the stone itself. And that was a model project funded by ODNR, and they are monitoring and watching the development of that so that there may be less dependency on the natural resource of gravel in some of our constructed roadways. I think these are all exciting opportunities. I think that there are many more that could, and hopefully will start as its genesis here in Lorraine County under this program. We appreciate the Commissioners' consideration of this and the help and assistance from the Solid Waste Department and county administrator, and we look forward to having this program up and running in the near future.
Good job. Good job, Dan.
Just for the sake of the public, the initial infusion of money to this program will be $250,000 in 2002, with an additional $50,000 every year thereafter for five years. Correct, Mr. Moore? It'll end up being a total package of a half a million, right? So that we'll be delivering, you know, another half a million dollars of potential economic and stimulus to the economy.
Do you want to repeat those figures again, just for clarity?
Apparently they've been modified since my last look. Dan, please.
Dan, you want to go to the podium?
Well, I was trying to find the figures, but I can't find them on the paper, so.
I believe from the policy committee.
It's 250 the first year, 100 the second year, and $50,000, I mean $50,000, the next three years, okay?
So it'll be $500,000 total.
I thought maybe somebody changed it.
You coupled that to your last large incentive, you have another half a million dollars going in for job creation and economy stimulation in the county. It's really exciting. Also, I want to reiterate what they said. We are the first ones in the state of Ohio to put forth this program and bring it to fruition.
Thank you, guys. Great job. Any more discussion? I'm sorry, that was your job.
Any more discussion? This is Vancy.
Hi.
Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Mrs. Blair.
Hi.
Okay. Amendment Resolution Number 01-899, it was adopted September 27, 2001, which increased the sewer rates by the sixth wastewater treatment plants in the Oberlin Road and Tanglewood areas. This amendment will modify the usage fees to reflect the same percentage increase of the packaged plants for the Oberlin Road and Tanglewood areas. This is strictly a housekeeping resolution.
Some who.
Discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Okay, reports, comments, Mr. Cordez, Administrator?
Couple of money issues this morning. First, I know you see these large amount of materials laying on the table out here.
That one of your minor issues. Excuse me.
It's one of my minor issues. It may be major to others, but it's mine to me. As I usually like to do when we reach certain milestones in the Justice Center, I like to provide a brief progress report. I am once again pleased to tell the board that we have our materials submitted. We're missing one of the books. It'll be here today. There was some errors in it and had to be changed. These are our bid materials here. I will leave them in the back room for the Commissioners to look through. I'll also be giving you some cost data. I'm pleased to announce that right now we're on target, on track, and we are now $205,000 under budget in the projected cost for the Justice Center. While it's not a tremendous amount of money, it's still a positive sign. That money will remain in the aggregate budget. Obviously, we still have a very, very long way to go, and hopefully that number won't go down, but it could. Right now, it's gone up to $205,000. I will be requesting a resolution next Thursday after you have time to digest some of this materials, if you so desire, to go out to bid. And we'll go out to bid on the date we said we were going to. It's going to be a very rough time for all of us. My concern is that the bids come back within cost expectations. It now becomes out of our hands and into somebody else's. I'm not sure I particularly like that, but that's the way it is.
We can't fill it ourselves.
That's right. So until we get the bids back in April, it's going to be a time of nervous tension. We have anticipations that the bids will come back within acceptable parameters, but, you know, one never knows for sure. So that's a brief update on the Justice Center. A couple of things that you should know, though, is we're not bidding the courtroom technology right now. We're looking real strong in our cost expectations in the courtroom technology. David, you looked a little surprised.
No, that's okay. Continue.
Well, the reason we're not bidding the courtroom technology is we'll wait another year and a half, and technology's still developing and still coming down in price. So it's better we bid that towards the end of the project than we bid it now. And we're not bidding the security package for similar reasons, in addition to the fact that they haven't brought back a suitably costed security package to my liking yet. And we sent it back, again, this is probably the second or third time, because they're still over budget, and we'll be bidding that later in the package. I'm comfortable with that because we always anticipated waiting until about a third to a half of the way through the project to start looking at bidding those issues for cost savings. The other issue I informed the board about previously is that we have a $63,000 fee, and we have to pay to the City of Alaria to look over those plans. That fee isn't in the budget, so we'll be discussing that issue later on. I sent you around some correspondence on that. Next week, we'll be meeting with the City of Alaria to look at the streetscape issues that go with the Justice Center. We still require an approval from the City of Alaria on streetscape and landscaping issues on the building. That will happen next week at a meeting with the Planning Department. I'm comfortable that they're going to like what they're presented. If there's any problems, I'll bring that back to the board after that meeting. That's all I really have to report on the Justice Center. We are, as far as our Port Authority goes, we will be kicking off the Port Authority on March 6 at the Spitzer Center in the evening, March 4.
Thank you. I thought it was the 4th.
Thank you. Fourth.
Monday.
Monday. March 4. There'll be an evening, there'll be a social, a swearing-in, a training, a presentation to all the members. It's going to be a nice kickoff over at the college, and the college is working with us on that. We'll be bringing you back some cost data on that. But it's here. It's the date. Everything's going to come together on the 4th, so we're there. And I'm very pleased with that. And if you have anybody that you would particularly like to invite to this auspicious occasion, please let Mr. Twining know. We're getting ready to go out with invitations. I've already spoken to some of the Commissioners, but not all. Well, actually, I only spoken to one. So if the other two would provide me with their input, I would appreciate. I'll come see you and who you want to invite. It's going to be a real gala affair as these things go for us. We're very pleased. And that's pretty much all I have to report this morning. Thank you.
Okay. Assistant County Prosecutor, Mr. Ennis?
I have no report this morning.
Commissioner, report.
Mr. Vancy?
Dan handed me some information from ODNR this morning, and I thought it might be interesting for people to know that Staples will be taking old computers for recycling February the 17th and the 18th, and in exchange, they will be offering $100 on any purchase of another computer and $20 off the purchase of $100 or more value. And John, myself, and Kathy Page did go down to Columbus last Monday, came back with a lot of information, and we're going to do some research on regards to the transit, and then I'll be reporting further on that later. But what specifically was interesting to me was that other counties are not giving general fund money to the transit, and what they're doing is they are forcing the transits to have cooperation, partnership-type of agreements with other, or they're partnering, partnering, yeah, can't talk this morning, partnering with, like, the schools, hospitals, veteran service, Children and Family First, and many other agencies, and that's how they're getting their funding. Then I talked with Ron this morning. There's one county that's using community development money in some way, and Ron and I will research that to see how they're doing with that. And another thing, the state had us at a population of, what was it, under 2,000, John, or about 200,000?
Under 200,000.
200,000 or under?
Under 200,000.
And that could have affected our funding, and we want to look into that a little bit more, too.
Yeah.
And that's all I have to report this morning.
Thank you. Commissioner Blair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to say first to Jim Cordez, our county administrator, and all the people who have worked with him, nice job on the Justice Center and a nice job on the Board Authority. It makes us, as Commissioners, really look good, I think. Secondly, I would like to announce again the multimodal transportation plan presentation that the Community Development Department is having on Thursday evening, February 28, at 7:00 PM at the New Russia Township Hall on Butter Nut Ridge Road. It will be a 45-minute power presentation by Pogomire Design Group, a consultant hired to complete this project. According to Mr. Twining's letter, there are seven committees that have worked very hard in assisting with the preparation of this planning document. The committees included transit, roadway, rail, airport, water port, bike pedestrian, and information technology. And finally, I would just like to mention that this past Monday, the commuter rail task force for Lorraine County formed under the Lorraine County Community Alliance met at the college. There were 30, approximately 30, in attendance. And subsequent to that meeting, I, as the chairperson of the Lorraine County Community Alliance, have prepared a letter to the Transportation Advisory Committee of Nauaka, which will be meeting tomorrow, Friday, at 10:00 AM. And I have asked them to remove a Section 5.5 that was added to the Phase 2 Northeast Ohio Commuter Rail Feasibility Study. This added Section 5.5 talks about the Route 1 from Cleveland to Lorraine, and the summation of it says, "As a direct result of a meeting and the opposition of the local mayors and their congressmen," this is three mayors from Cuyahoga County and Congressman Kucinich, "implementation of commuter rail in this corridor is unlikely unless conditions change significantly. Based on this information, expending any additional planning and/or implementation resources in this corridor may not be warranted, and it is recommended that commuter rail not be pursued in the Route 1 corridor at this time." I believe that this section just needs to be removed from that report. I do not know how my suggestion or the suggestion of this committee will be received, but we are going to talk about it tomorrow. So I just wanted to fill you in on that aspect. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I have no comment. Sure. It's 11:00 AM. We have a public hearing on the proposed annexation of approximately 30.37 acres in Alaria Township to the City of Alaria, Ohio. Dr. Denny Lehman, agent for the petitioner, the church of the open door, February 14, 2002, 11:00 AM, I believe. The attorneys representing the township is unavailable to this date. The Commissioners may wish to continue this hearing or not. I believe the other parties are here. Jerry, did you have a recommendation on how to?
Yeah, my understanding is that the petitioner's proponents for the issue want to go ahead and make a presentation of their case, but the township, for whatever evidence they wanted to present, would like to have a continuance of that matter, and it is my understanding that is agreeable with.
So I should continue with my statement here, then?
Yeah, we should go ahead and make the presentation for the proponents of these.
I'm Attorney Don Longwell with Squire Sanders and Dempsey, and I do not see Dr. Lehman here right now because our notice said the hearing would be at 11:30.
Really?
Um.
What notice was that, the jury said?
The notice from the county Commissioners. I've got a copy right here. It says the hearing will be Thursday, February 14, at 11:30 AM.
Ooh, well, we're going to have that hearing at 11:30.
Okay. Well, all we can do is we can finish up our.
We can continue in our business.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for calling out our attention.
You want to hold business, then? I need authorization to help Department of Transportation to proceed with a closure by way of a cul-de-sac on Kipton Nickel Plate Road, east of State Route 58, at the US Route 20 intersection, Pittsfield Township. ODOT has contacted the county engineer regarding a project they are proposing at this intersection, which has numerous accidents, in part because of the Kipton Nickel Plate Road entering State Route 58 from the east, approximately 100 feet south of US Route 20. Traffic moving in and out of this road is very dangerous and also ties up traffic. At ODOT's request, the county engineer has studied several alternatives to the present alignment. After meeting with Pittsfield Township and the Joint Vocational School, the engineer recommended installing a cul-de-sac on Kipton Nickel Plate Road, east of State Route 58. This is also ODOT's preferred alternative, and this will, they will include this in their intersection plans, and construction will be at their cost. Construction is planned for fiscal year 2005.
I believe Commissioner Blair had some, wanted to get some questions answered.
Yes, and the county engineers this morning here, perhaps both he and John Hamilton are here, and they have presented a letter from the Joint Vocational School. Randall, William Randall, Superintendent, addressed to Mr. Hamilton, said, "Please be advised that the Lorraine County JBS Board of Education discussed the idea of creating cul-de-sac for Kipton Nickel Plate Road at State Route 58. There was no opposition to this proposal. We look forward to that change and the idea of the proposed lane changes for both US 20 and State Route 58."
You guys want to say anything else, or?
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. County.
The letter you received, pretty self-explanatory in detail form, JBS Board of Education has approved this concept. We have two gentlemen with us this morning from the Ohio Department of Transportation, Tom Whitinger and Craig DeVore. They've driven up to Lorraine County to answer any questions that you may have in relationship to their progress and their design criteria, and perhaps even some traffic concepts of flow and accident ratios. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce these two gentlemen from the Ohio Department of Transportation.
Sure, welcome.
Thank you.
Could you please identify yourself again, thanks.
Good morning.
Your name?
My name's Craig DeVore with District 3 ODOT, and this is Tom Whitinger, District 3 ODOT. Basically, we're here this morning to answer any questions that there may be, need to be answered on this matter.
Well, you guys did feel that this needed to be done because of the high accident ratios at that intersection, is that?
Correct. This is a location that was studied as part of the Highway Safety Program. Intersection of 20 and 58 was identified under that program as a high accident location. The cul-de-sacking of Kipton Nickel Plate Road is one of the recommendations that came out of that study to improve the intersection.
Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to add, or?
We may want to clarify on the cost issue. I know it's been stated in the newspapers and otherwise that Ohio Department of Transportation will pay for the project, cost of the project. We have asked for cost partnering from the City of Oberlin because the north approach of the intersection is within the city limits. And also, we have, there are other elements of this project that have been requested, other elements have been requested to add to the project, an extension of the right-turn lane on the south approach. That portion of the project would require funding outside of ODOT. But we will go ahead and incorporate the requested improvements into our plans as we design them.
Well, I think you've seen that this board and engineer's been very good at creating partnerships within the communities, so if you need any help on that, Mr. Carney's pretty good at bringing people together.
Okay.
Right, Ken?
Did I lay my money there?
I know, I know. Okay, so you guys are District 3, which is?
We cover eight county area, and our office is in Ashland, Ohio.
Okay, that's what I thought. And then are you guys with your, was it District 11 right next door to us, or is it 4?
12.
Is it 12?
We have 4, 11, and 12 that, but.
I'm just going to set you guys up. How's the third lane coming down there on Route 2?
Very well, it's coming along very well. I'm not sure how well it's coming along.
That's my segue there for you guys. You guys came up here, I'm trying to get you some more play here, so.
I didn't really come prepared to answer any questions on that topic.
Hey, Mr. Leh. Oh, okay, well, I didn't mean to put you on the spot there, so.
Tom can probably answer that.
We do have some copies of the report if you would like to.
Oh, yes, we would.
It shows all the accident information, you know, traffic volume information.
Because we were asking that last time.
Shirley Johnson would probably like to see that. She asked for accident detail at the last meeting, so thank you for that.
Does Shirley have any questions for him? I mean.
Well, I was going to ask that question, but you're taking care of it now.
You're doing good today.
Okay, well, we appreciate you guys coming up.
Just one more point on the funding issue. This was a safety location. There is a separate portion of money available at our Columbus office for safety projects. We were only funded at a fraction of what this project will cost. We've been funded for $250,000 on this project.
How much, please tell?
$250,000 out of safety money, which is, again, allocated, will be allocated in fiscal 2005, I believe.
Yes.
And that's why we're looking for cost sharing, because we're estimating this project to be probably close to $1 million, as I said. The Joint Vocational School has asked that we extend, there's a proposed right-turn lane on the south approach, it would be northbound to go eastbound on 250. They've asked us to extend that lane clear down to the drives at the Joint Vocational School. So I think Pittsfield Township has made some indication that they may help us with that, too. So really, for any money we can at this point, because we're over budgeted every year. We're going to go forward, hoping all this, all the funding falls into place, we're going to go forward and design the project. If we can't come up with the money, you know, it may, it may sit on a shelf for a while.
There's no need to do that. Just come back to us, and we'll work with you.
That's good to hear.
I'm giving you your Valentine Day.
I don't want our, I don't want our road projects to slow down. Just come back, and we'll see what we can.
We don't either. We're going to resubmit to for additional safety money.
Boy, is that going to tack up here. No, I just don't want them, I just don't want.
He's the chairman, I can't.
No, I just say I don't want you to put anything on the shelf without coming back communicating with us, so that's all.
All right, thank you.
But you do have the money for the design that's available?
Yes, we'll go, yeah, we're going to, we'll absorb that cost as a district, the design portion of it. The safety money doesn't pay for the design portion. We will go forward with the design of the project with every intention to build it in 2005, again, hoping all the money falls into place.
I'm sure it will. I think Elizabeth would like to.
Elizabeth Rumix, R-U-M-I-C-S, Oberlin. As a resident of Oberlin and a taxpayer, has Oberlin been approached? Does it have any idea of what the potential costs may be? I think it, too, is having some budgetary problems, as is everybody in the state.
I think the gentleman said that, that they had, that they had spoken with Oberlin on that issue, and they're looking for partnership on that. Was that, is that correct, sir?
That's correct.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, so.
May I sit on the shelf for a while?
Well, we need to make a motion then. Okay, then. Also move. I'm not going to read all that, so.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vansy?
Aye, as long as there's no county general fund money involved.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I know you will, but I'd like to thank the gentlemen from ODOT 3.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
And the county engineer. While you're there, I want to just mention, because you asked about I-90.
I know, I just wanted to bring it out there.
Tom O'Leary, ODOT Director 3, and Beth Wilson, who is their PR person, is working with the Lorraine County Community Alliance, and they are coming to our April meeting, which is the first Friday in April. The meeting will be held at Lorraine County Community College, and they will discuss what ODOT 3 is doing in Lorraine County, and they are open to topics of consideration. So it will be their Lorraine County Day. They've done a variety of things to reach out to the various counties in their eight county district, and sometimes they have us there, sometimes they come here. So this time, they have asked to partner with the alliance. There'll be our April meeting, and so I'm, and a special invitation was extended via the phone yesterday to the commissioners and our administrator to be there. And I suggested that they send you a letter, too, but they would like you to be at this meeting, so.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, guys.
Any other old business?
None.
New business?
Not here.
None.
I accept notation that the commissioners will conduct an administrative briefing on Tuesday, February 19th, at 9:30 here in the public hearing room. Book correspondent?
I'll move the reading be waived.
Second?
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vansy?
Aye.
Public comment?
Any public comment? Seeing, oh, Bob? Oh, Bob's going to Hawaii here, so he has to get his last word in here.
Good morning, Bob, or good afternoon?
Robert Kish in Alaria, seven Cs. I guess this is Valentine's Day, as everybody knows, so some people get roses, some people get thorns.
What are we going to get today?
I think I am the thorn.
No such thing.
There was a fax list, and I was on the fax list. And I've noted that the last forum meetings, now I am no longer on the fax list, they're in the process of eliminating it. However, I just recently saw a copy of the cover sheet on the fax list. And surprisingly, there's a name there of a person I have never seen in this audience yet, but he got notified. I didn't. So I think I'm on a completely different list.
I'm asking you, you faxed out.
Anyhow.
Who is it, Mr. Kish?
Who is it? Mr. McConnell. Jim McConnell, I know him well.
He's the township trustee, yes.
Township trustee, right? Okay. That's why he's on the list?
He has never been here, and I invite him to come.
He's a township trustee.
Okay, let's, let's, let's back.
During last week's commissioners' meeting, it was pointed out there isn't much, if any, public opinion encountered. The seven Cs were formed, just to counter that fact. At an earlier meeting, was pointed out the ineffectiveness of notices of public meetings. I suggested an endless tape to hear of these public meetings. No action, perhaps an automated, if you want so-and-so, or you want to hear the meetings, push 7, push 9, whatever it takes. But then public meetings could be accessed, or at least published, without actually additional cost, I hope. I also requested, but okay, the fax list I'm over with.
Thank you.
I feel the public has seen the enemy, poor Pogo. I feel the public has seen the enemy of the public, and they may be present. I enjoy sunshine. I am also cognizant that the sunshine law exists. It took six months of uncovering eight stories of stonewalling before I was able to purchase VSH copies of these meetings. I just found out on Monday that even though we don't have copies available, at least on Monday, of these VHS tapes, because the county hasn't given them, the county engineer's office has in their possession the January 24th copy even. However, I did get notified today that I do have three copies, one being made as we speak, being available to me today. So I guess there is some squeaking wheel, I guess, around Thorn and aside. Anyhow, trust means not having to completely verify each and every week whether a tape is available or not. But there they go again. Cicero said, "Cultivation of the mind is as necessary as food to the body." This inquiring mind wants to know of things that are public knowledge, or should be public knowledge. The Titanic was aware of icebergs in the Atlantic. However, the captain, I was not the captain, I don't drive the ship, I can't ring the bell, but they set full speed ahead, and they wound up in where? Anyhow, I just recently read in another publication that Kent is a word of defeat. Ot is a word of duty. We ought to get the most bang for a buck. Hindsight is remember 2020. There are many things I would have changed, I suppose, if I could have, had I been able to go back. We're still trying to put a two-ton building in a one-ton lot with no parking. I don't know, but I think if you connected the dots between Alaria and Lorraine, you would find that the building probably should go to the northwest of Alaria. At least it would be more centrally located. There is a lot available for three and a half million that I just checked out. I'm not buying it. I don't have any idea what you could sell the present lot for. Anyhow, I realize that all votes aren't 100% unanimous, unanimous, and that's good. Because I always, I remember saying, if somebody else jumped off the bridge, would you do? I don't. But I also remember another saying, dead fish swim with the stream.
Thanks, Bob. If nobody else?
That's good.
As long as I don't have any dead fish on my mailbox, Bob. If anybody else has anything else to say, we're going to take a five-minute break, or should we close the meeting, I guess? Well, we're going to take a five-minute, what?
Kevin Lehman is here.
Right.
The Church of the Open Door.
Right, we know, we're just going to take a five-minute break, because the hearing doesn't start till 11:30. We'll reconvene at 11:30.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I was talking.
It's 11:38. Public hearing on the proposed annexation of approximately 30.37 acres in Alaria Township to the City of Alaria, Ohio. Dr. Denny Lehman, agent for the petitioner, the Church of the Open Door, February 14th, 2002. Petition was submitted to this office on September 28th, 2001, for the proposed annexation of approximately 30.37 acres in Alaria Township to the City of Alaria, Ohio. Petition was filed with the county auditor and the engineer. The engineer reviewed the accuracy of the petition and map, and by report dated October 30th, 2001, the engineer indicated several discrepancies. Dr. Lehman submitted a corrected legal description and map on November 15th, 2001. This was again filed by the county auditor and engineer. By letter dated November 27th, 2001, the engineer indicated the review of the petition and map contained no discrepancies. The description followed the map accurately, and the parcel is contiguous and adjacent to the City of Alaria, Ohio. Alaria City Council adopted ordinance number 2001-212 dated December 17th, 2001, setting for services to be provided to this property if the annexation is granted. The commissioners, by resolution number 01-1126, adopted December 6th, 2001, received petition and map, and scheduled this public hearing. Let's see, what we got here now is, I guess, Jerry, do you want to administer the oath to anyone wishing to give testimony? If anyone thinks they might testify or might testify with complete standing, raise your right hand. Do each of you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give shall be the truth that you shall ask from God or unrefined law per.
I do.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Lehman, would you like to make any comments?
The only comments I'd make is this, reiterating what it said in our petition, is that we own approximately 200 acres of property in that area of the county. All but the 30 acres are already in the city of Alaria. And it was not too many months ago, in the process of selling some of our properties on our south borders, we found that there was a potential chance for tying into city sewers. And this is something we've been looking at for years, because we've been operating with an irrigation system, which EPA said the last time we expanded, that was it, we can't expand anymore. So because, pardon?
I have a question.
Yes.
If I may, you said that you have 200 acres that you own, and all but 30 are in the city?
Yes.
And yet you don't have access to a sanitary sewer?
Now, what happened was, we bought, the 30 acres we are on, and where our buildings are, all our buildings are on the 38.37 acres. We, in the process, after we purchased that and started building buildings, we were able to purchase a 45-acre area contiguous to us on the east, and then eventually bought another 55 acres that joined that 45 acres. Then several years ago, in the process of trading some property, a campground out by Wakeman, we were. Wakeman, we were able to acquire more property that joined our 100 acres south, down near the Turner Boulevard. So that property was all purchased after we started building and were in the process of building. We have anything on that, like the other 170 acres that we own, there's no buildings on it. So in order to get sewers, we'd have to go through that property with your sewer line to cojoin with that sewer on our south extremity, which is down by the convenient Fumar, Turner Boulevard, all that area off of West Ridge.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. So in that process of finding out that there, the city was going to expand that list station and make more access for apartments and buildings, we acquired the city about our opportunity, and since that arose, we then petitioned to annex our 30 acres that we have most of our buildings on, so that we can expand. Once we got into that sewer system, we could expand without having to put a whole new aeration system in, which, whatever that may cost. Which we don't even know if the EPA would allow a new aeration system to go in.
Would you abandon the one you have right now?
If we got into the city sewers?
Yes.
Yes. I'm sure we would have to. Part of it would be, we'd have to, and obviously, we would not want to maintain that anymore. It takes a lot of maintenance, it doesn't, I don't think, it does a good job, but the city sewers, obviously, would be much better. So that was our main reason and why we petitioned this. We were, to add all of our property to the city, but also the main reason was to have access to city sewers. Of course, we have other things the city offers, too, is fire and police protection.
And so you, right now, you're talking, you guys own 200 acres, not...
203, yeah.
And 173 are in the city?
Yes.
Okay, because it made it sound like you had 200 plus 30, so.
No, no, I'm sorry, the total was 200 acres. 30 of it is outside the city.
Okay, and I guess the, are you guys in agreement to continue the hearing on March 7th?
Yes, we are.
Was that an agreement?
Yes.
I don't think there's any township trustees here, correct? Is there any? Oh, there is? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I missed you. Is there, no more comments?
That's, that's pretty much it. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you. And are there any township trustees present who would like to make a statement?
I think the...
I don't think he stood up, though, did he? I mean...
They did. Did you want to wait to make those comments, Rob?
Yeah.
I think their attorney indicated they wanted to wait.
Okay. So we'll just put that he waited. Is there anyone present in favor of this annexation wanting to give any testimony? Is there anyone in opposition wanting to make a statement? Okay, now, on this here, we have 90 days from the first hearing, but should we wait on that until our next, on March 7th?
Did, did we want to go through the other statutory?
That's what I'm wondering. I mean, we're going to have to do it again on the 7th, though, aren't we?
No, they want to...
They want to go through all?
We just want to acknowledge that on the record?
What's that?
I think we should. I think we should do it now, get it over with.
Okay.
Usually, we just have some stipulations that the proper notices and everything have been... Can you make any kind of a presentation regarding that?
Yes. There it is, I got it. On November 28th, the, both the city and the township were given a copy of our notice of petition, and upon filing the amended petition on November 15th, we also delivered notice of the amended petition. And we have an affidavit from the Chronicle Telegram showing that we gave public notice for four weeks immediately prior to this meeting.
And can you state your name for the record?
I am Attorney Don Longwell with Squire Sanders and Dempsey.
Okay, so should I go through this list right here with him?
No, all you have to do is ask him if he stipulates to 70902, 70903, 709.031...
709.032, so you've stipulated?
Yes.
Okay. That you're in compliance with the statutes?
Yes, we're in full compliance with the statute.
Okay, thank you.
That having been said, Mr. Chairman, if it's appropriate at this time, I will move that we continue this public hearing to March the 7th at 12:00 noon, if that's agreeable.
Fine with me. Second?
Is that date, okay. All right, I will so moved then.
Second?
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye. Can I make one comment?
Sure.
You know, with these annexations that are on the agenda today, that's almost 90 acres out of the township.
Yeah, but I think each one's...
I mean, I'm just bringing that up for point of information, but that's another 90 acres out of township.
Okay, thank you. Do we have to, so do we just adjourn the meeting? The actual public hearing? Do we motion?
Chairman, I believe today's business is concluded and that we adjourn. Second?
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye. Okay, thank you, everybody, for coming.